Joining the meeting via Zoom. Councilmember Uparano?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burnworth?
Here.
Mayor Dale?
Here. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
Mr. Lopez, would you, more, sir? Ready again. I have heard it in the background. I believe it's six. And two, oh, which is has one nation. And if it's wrong, if it's just wrong. Standing up, okay. Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Um, Mr. Mayor, no.
Okay. And, uh, we may, any action taken in closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The council did discuss one item of property. Uh, direction was given, but that is all. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to C1. Matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the city council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged, uh, by the mayor, and at that time state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a timeline on each person's presentation at three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Anybody like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on then to D, consent agenda. All items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council in one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other persons, uh, request that be, uh, any item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at that time as determined by the mayor.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have motion and a second, please vote.
Mr. Mayor, with Ms. Eugino not being present, we will do a roll call vote.
That's fine.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Councilmember Eugenio?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Uparano?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burnworth?
Yes.
Mayor Dale?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Back in the good old days, I used to do those just for honor this. Cool. Okay. Alright, so let's, uh, move on to, uh, D1. Approval of the city council meeting minutes, September twenty first of, uh, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, we need to go on to E special presentations.
Wait a second, oh, I'm sorry. We already did consent, okay? E1 proclamation of October as cancer awareness, hey, thank you. Told you fifty-six, it's coming quick. So, let's see which ones are what. You guys got me all nervous, you got me starting early. Okay, alright. Proclamation is breast cancer awareness, October twenty twenty-two. Whereas breast cancer is the second most common, uh, cancer diagnosed in women, next to skin cancer. And whereas over two, two hundred eighty-seven thousand new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women, and two thousand seven hundred ten cases invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in men. And whereas the city honors those in our community that have lost their lives to breast cancer and to send our condolences to their families. And whereas, recognize the courage, women and men who have, or who are living with the disease. And whereas, having regular mammograms can help find breast cancer at an early stage when treatment is most successful. And now therefore be resolved, I, Mayor Jeff Dale, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as breast cancer awareness month. The city of Imperial and encourage Imperial residents to join activities that will increase awareness of breast cancer and advocate for comprehensive cancer care. Witness thereof, this day of October, uh, twenty twenty-two. Yeah, there you go, let's take that, come on in here.
One, two, three. One more for good luck, alright.
That's just really cool. Okay, check our heads. Oh, that is cool. Right on. You know, something that we're all impacted by because all of us have relatives have all gone through. That's very important, that's really good, thank you very much. Oh, that's right. Would you guys like to bring something up about the coffee with cup tomorrow? What, yeah, I gotta know what time it is.
Good evening, I'm Officer Deanna Caldwell. I would like to invite our city council members and members of our community to Coffee with a Cup tomorrow. Uh, it's gonna be between seven to ten AM at our new Starbucks location here in Imperial. Come out, have a casual conversation with us, um, get to know one another, enjoy a cup of coffee. Uh, it's a good time for us to connect with our community and, um, we look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, fire prevention week.
We've had a jumbo coffee already.
I've had two or three. Okay, uh, fire prevention week, October ninth through the fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. Whereas the city of Imperial is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Imperial. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. And people are at great risk from fire in their homes. And whereas here in California in, in twenty twenty-one, an estimated two million five hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-eight acres burned, three thousand six hundred and twenty-nine structures were damaged or destroyed with eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-five number of incidents and three confirmed losses of life. As of September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Here in California during twenty twenty-two, there has already been six thousand five hundred and ninety-four fires and three hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-eight acres burned, according to CalFire. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire along with work, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in home fires. Seventeen percent of home fire deaths occur due to malfunctioning smoke alarm. And twenty-five percent of smoke alarm failures with the deadly outcome occur, uh, due to the dead battery and now therefore be resolved this day. Mayor Jeff Dale, along with my fellow councilmembers hereby proclaim the week of October ninth, fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two as fire prevention week. It, for, for the resolve during this week, we encourage Imperial residents to do the following. Educate themselves about fire safety, take the appropriate precautions in our homes with the installation and maintenance of smoke alarms, and examine your home for fire hazards and prepare for fire escape plan for your family and honor, recognize the service and sacrifice firefighters around the world have made to ensure their communities remain safe. Passed on this day, October, uh, twenty twenty-two by Imperial City Council. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah.
One, two, three. And third one, we're good.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to E3, special presentation from IBC.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Such a pleasure to be here before, uh, this fine group. Uh, thank you, Mayor, and council members for inviting us here today. And, um, hopefully we'll try to entertain you at the same time, give you some really good information. Um, I'm Dr. Johnson, um, I'm the superintendent president of Imperial Valley College. I wanna introduce my colleague here. He's our vice president of business affairs. We'll do this presentation, we'll do a quick little tag team. Want to just give, our ultimate goal is to make sure that the community, uh, all Imperial residents know about what's happening in IBC. We wanna have a very open door policy. We want people to come to our campus, check us out, um, and consider us as a viable option as well as just be a partner, um, because we do produce a, a lot, a significant, uh, workforce, um, in a whole county, so, um, that's the purpose of being here today. So let me start this real quick. Think this has a delay. Go for it. Oh, there you go. Alright, so the, here are items that we'll cover. We'll talk about our master plans, some campus enhancements, um, measure B, which is gonna be on the ballot, um, and also some significant accomplishments that IBC has, um, are experiencing at this current time, as well as our campus priorities. So, here are some of our strategic goals. Um, tomorrow, actually, we're having a town hall meeting to just talk about where we are with meeting some of these specific objectives. Um, for the most part, all the objectives that we laid out in our twenty thirty, um, strategic master plan are really coming to fruition. We're really excited about that. Um, and, and I think that attributes to a lot of our success over the last year because we're really driving, um, performance, driving outcomes, making sure our students are getting what they need, um, and, and becoming productive works, uh, uh, workers in, in society. One thing that we rolled out probably about four years ago was guided, this guided pathways initiative. Throughout the years, people, we have heard the comments about it takes, um, students six years, five years, four years to earn a two-year degree. Uh, we take this very seriously. Um, I have been with IBC for the past six years. Um, so this has been my personal charge is to make sure that, um, we, we get our students on a path, stay on a path, and complete in a reasonable amount of time. Two to three years should, should be the absolute max to earn an associate degree. Now, if you wanna stay a little bit longer and earn a second associate degree, so, so be it. Um, but we wanna make sure you get in, get the, get the skills and, and the knowledge that you need to move on to transfer or other things in, in work. So this has been a conundrum that we have been trying to fix. As students enter our facilities, a lot of times they bounce around. Um, they go from one department to another department, and then come back to another department just to find out that they were in the wrong department all along. Um, so we, we're trying to streamline this process to make it a little bit more easy on the student. Most of our students are first generation college students and they don't have, um, parents and, um, and friends who have went to college that can kind of walk them through the, through the steps. So, we take it our, as our personal mission to make sure that this step, this, this process is, is seamless. You probably heard a lot of things about what we're doing with, as, as regards to equity and, and removing barriers. Um, we have invested heavily, we have secured, uh, millions of dollars from the state and other, uh, philanthropic organizations to support our housing initiative because when we found out that, at one point, we had a survey about two hundred and thir, two hundred and fifty-one students were living in their cars, um, living homeless, um, place to place. Um, and, and this has been our charge is to make sure that our students have an opportunity because it's one thing being a college student and studying and working hard, um, but it's a whole nother, a whole nother level when you're dealing with where I'm gonna sleep tonight. And we had students who were living, actually a married couple that was living in their car. The, the female, um, had a three point, uh, three point two GPA. The husband had a two point eight G, two point eight GPA, very sharp. They were living in their cars. Now, we all know that maintaining that, those grades and that performance is not sustainable if you don't have a place to s- sleep any. So, that has really took our, that has really been our, our focal, focal, focus point is to make sure that students have the basic essentials, um, so they can stay, they can thrive in classes. We're also tag teaming with, um, San Diego State. Um, we just received a grant, eight point eight million dollar grant, um, in, um, with San Diego State to start a housing facility in Clexico. Um, so we're just trying to find, iron out, iron, iron out those fine details. We need a little bit more money, so we're trying to secure some additional funding for that. Um, but we hope to have that project under, underway within the next couple of years. This takes me into our, our master plan, our facilities plan. On the left, you'll see our current structure and layout. About two years ago, we embarked on developing our strategic master plan for, um, all the items we wanna complete by twenty thirty. So on the right-hand side, you see the red buildings are all new buildings that we would like to build out. Uh, one, we wanna make sure that we're supporting the lithium industry. Uh, we're working very closely with some of those, um, providers to make sure that we can produce that workforce. Also, another big thing is our, um, our safety and training center. Uh, we have been in conversation with our post-director as well as our fire directors, as well as, um, local, um, public safety officers to find out what is the needs, what's the gaps? And, and, and they have, and we'll talk about a little bit more, um, a little bit later. So I don't wanna, uh, still, still his stuff thunder. So, here are some of those, uh, newer, uh, repurposed buildings. We wanna have a regional public safety, um, center, a student services center, a multicultural and equity center, a auto tech and art building, another instructional building, a facilities complex, as well as a police and safety training center. You know? And this is some of the measure B plans, but we'll bypass that right now. If you haven't been on campus, you'll notice that we're, we have been a construction site for the past two years. Um, a lot of our buildings are in badly need of repair or upgrades or some type of autorization. Um, so, the last couple of years, we have taken advantage while our students aren't, um, fully on campus, um, to upgrade some of our facilities. Uh, we have a new, um, disability, some support programs and services building. We in, increased, improved our campus lighting for safety purposes. We upgraded our, made, re-modernize our library, our, uh, counseling and financial aid centers. Uh, we just expanded our college center, um, that was requested by our students and we want to make sure that they had a place to socialize and study and so forth. Uh, we just finished and had our grand opening for our nursing, uh, facility. Fully remodela, modernized, um, and really has all the state-of-the-art technology that they need in the local high, in the local, um, hospitals. We're in the process of upgrading our HVAC systems. Our HVAC systems are sixty, fifty years old, um, and they, they tend to shut down quite often, um, which is quite unbearable in the summer. Um, remodera, modernizing our academic buildings. With, with, with all the, the, the school shootings, uh, we, we decided to increase our campus safety. We're installing keyless, keyless entry so we can lock that, have the, the ability to lock down our facility, um, tennis courts, restrooms, as well as our auto tech building. Uh, so, this has recently got approved by the board about, about a year ago, so we're in the process of getting this, um, DSA approval. Um, and hopefully to have some plans, uh, within a very near future. And now I'll turn it over to Seza.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, and again, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you, uh, for having us here tonight. So I'd like to go back to the previous slide because I think that's an important, uh, facility that we can briefly discuss a little bit more. Uh, this facility has been financed by a measure J bond that was passed back in twenty twelve. This project, in essence, uh, the approximate cost is about forty to forty-five million dollars, give or take. But this project is gonna eat up the rest of the bond under measure J. All the proceeds that were approved under measure J will pretty much be exhausted with this project. So I think it's important that we highlight that. So, measure B. So measure B is a general obligation bond that the Board of Trustees at IBC, by a resolution approved for us to have a new bond election in November. So, as Dr. Johnson alluded, we have a twenty thirty master plan, a vision, uh, we wanna, you know, meet our goals and expectations when it comes to facilities through that master plan. But it really needs the financial support of the community. Um, so that you know, this particular bond measure, uh, it's worth a hundred and thirty million dollars. Uh, it has a tax rate implication of three cents for every one hundred dollars of assessed value. Or, if you wanna put it in the simplest terms, so for every one hundred thousand dollars that your house is worth, if it's worth three hundred thousand, it's ninety dollars a year that you would pay. And again, it's based on asset valuation, not market value. So, you know, a, a little bit of difference right there. So, uh, and again, when you look at IBC, even though we have done a lot of renovation projects, you also need to consider the fact that the vast majority of our buildings are from the nineteen sixties. As you know, technology, uh, facilities, and the needs for students change dramatically from year to year. So when you factor, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy years of infrastructure that has, you know, pretty much been outdated for quite some time, I mean, there is a need for us to stay up to, uh, standards in community colleges in California so that we can continue, to continue to meet the academic achievement of students. So in essence, this is what measure, what this measure is gonna do. So, but not only do we want to go off our new bond, I mean, the, the, the key highlight of the projects that we want to, uh, build, if the, uh, voters approve the new bond measure, is a regional training center. And why that facility? Well, the reason for that is because we recognize that there is a huge need in the valley to continue to provide support to police, uh, fire, uh, EMS, emergency responders. Uh, they now get training, I mean, we have a current program that provides basic training, but we don't have a way in the valley locally for us to continue to enhance their training. You know, like anything else, if you have a license, you need to renew it every so often. And to get the training, you need to go out of the county. And let me tell you, council, when you go out of the county, you are looking at thousands, if not almost millions of dollars worth of expenses that taxpayers have to incur by sending people to get recertified. Uh, so again, this is gonna be a huge highlight, this is gonna be the main project driving this bond. And, uh, and again, it's gonna provide, uh, you know, a lot of savings from one end to local entities, local law enforcement entities, fire departments. Uh, because again, when you can provide that training in-house, here locally, you don't have to travel, you don't have to pay mileage fees, hotels, you know, sometimes airfare, uh, meals. I mean, there's a lot of savings if we are able to accomplish a project like this and have it locally here at IBC. So, and again, I talked, talked about some of the benefits for the region. Uh, you know, what other, what, what most people don't know also is that local bonds do promote local economies, uh, because all the work stays within. Uh, it, it helps our construction companies, subcontractors, and it's really taxpayer that it's been reinvested, taxpayer dollars that are being reinvested here locally in the valley. So, prior to consider a new bond, obviously, we had a survey. We conducted a survey from all of our register, uh, voters here, uh, in the county. And the survey results are there, so sixty-four percent of our voters, um, sided with, uh, voting yes in favor. You know, when the survey was conducted, they voted yes to support the bond measure. Uh, about eight percent were leaning towards yes, a little bit undecided. And, uh, six percent, uh, was no. Or don't know, I'm sorry. Uh, four percent no and eighty percent of, I'm sorry, four percent, uh, lean towards no and eighty percent were definitely no. So, but then again, this, uh, a G, a geo-bond requires a fifty-five percent approval, so we're confident that the community is gonna be supporting this new bond measure. So, this is what the ballot language says when it comes to the new bond election. And those are some of the additional projects that we, if approved, that we wanna pursue with this new bond funds. Because again, when you have older facilities, you know, typically facilities that go beyond fifty years, I mean, you basically need to replace them. Uh, but, you know, we are hoping that we can get, uh, a chance to, if not replace them, renovate them so that we could continue again to provide the best educational environment that we need to provide to our students. And again, some of the, uh, oversight that general obligation bonds provide, uh, you know, the monies, if the voters approve a new bond, obviously, the money would only be used for, uh, projects. It does not go to salaries and benefits. It has a bond oversight committee that will oversee the bond to make sure that expenditures are being used or utilized according to what the voters approved them for. And there are audits that are conducted on a yearly basis to make sure that we stay in compliance. So there's a lot of safeguards that protect the taxpayer from the funds being, you know, not being utilized according to how they approve them. Is that it? Alright.
And some other highlights, uh, for IBC is, one, we're celebrating sixty years. Sixty years of excellence, and, and we have a nice little annual report that we'd like to give you all, um, to take a review. We just, fresh off the printing press, we just completed it. Um, but the other, the big thing that we're really excited about is, you all know that there's probably about, I think there's about thirteen hundred community colleges in the whole nation. Thirteen hundred. Um, IBC, your very own IBC is a top ten finalist, according to the Aspen Institute. The Aspen Institute is a research arm. And basically what they do is they examine all the data from all the, you know, colleges, community colleges in the whole country and it's, look, and they're looking for what has changed? Who has, who was exceptional in having completion rates? Who has the highest transfer rate? Who has the, the best learning outcomes? Uh, who has the best workforce outcomes? And then also, they're looking at what is to change over time. So for example, if you have a, a graduation rate of ten percent and then over a course of three or four years, your graduation rate jumps to thirty or forty percent. Now their, their Aspen Institute is looking at that saying, wow, you're doing something that's exceptional that needs to be replicated across the whole country. So, we have a visit next week. Um, and during that visit, they're gonna determine if we're number one. So we're really, it's a, it's very, very exciting. It's, according to President, uh, former President Obama, he said that this is like the, the Oscars for community colleges. Um, so little Imperial Valley, competing against all the bigwigs in Texas and New York and Florida, uh, where we have a way more regulations here where, where some of those other states are way more lax and more nimble and can make changes. IBC is doing all the right things and making sure that our students are completing, that they are, um, getting, entering the workforce and increasing their salaries, um, that they are transferring to the universities and completing as well as the learning outcome. So we're really, really excited about that. And basically what I'm hearing, looking at the data, we are already probably in the top three or top five. Now it's just more or less, um, the visit and making sure that we, we put on a show. So, so we're really excited about that. Some other items here, just quickly. Um, our priorities for this year is really campus safety. We wanna continue to grow our enrollment. Uh, we had a, we took a huge hit, just like all the community colleges in the state and most colleges and universities across the country, um, during the pandemic, twenty to thirty percent. Uh, but we're, our growth, our enrollment is growing very well. Uh, we wanna enhance our websites since that's our primary mode of communication with many of our students. Community partnerships is, is essential. We wanna make sure that we're out and about, supporting the community. Athletics, we wanna grow that program. Um, grants and fundraising, we're always doing that, as well as professional development. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Uh, thank you again so much for giving us this opportunity, and I'll take any questions that the council may have. You know what, I don't have my card, I'm sorry. I should have had, I should have brought it, but I do have this for you, and if I could give you mine.
I was gonna say, councilmember Uparano, I also have their contact information from when they contact me, and I can also send that to you as well. Good luck on your.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Any other comments? Only have one comment.
Only have one comment. So, I wish you all the luck.
On your bond and your future award, I think you might win that sucker. You know, I B C's gone a long ways over the years, and it's a beautiful facility, and you guys are doing great things. Um, but the one thing that just gripes me and I have to throw it out there. We can spend trillions of dollars in countries that really don't give one, two shits about us. And our kids mean everything, our adults mean everything. And when it comes to education, it just irks me that we. We tend to never give them enough, and we have to worry about bonds and other things to try to complete things and keep things going forward, and it just gripes me. You know, um, if we're not going to fix roads, take some of that money and put it into this, because this is, this is our future. So I applaud both of you for coming, and I I wish you all the best and the luck. So, thank you. I wished I had a way that there was a. Something in the ear of Gavin Newsom so that rotten dog could hear this stuff, but it never happens, so. Okay, let's move on to F one. Take a breather for a second, I'm pissed, so I can't really talk. Amendment to the Victoria Ranch specific plan, planned unit development zone change and subdivision. Revision to the Victoria Ranch Unit Four B tentative track map.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. As you may already know, um, on September twenty first, twenty twenty-two, um, the city council introduced uh ordinance eight twenty-two. Uh, amending the Victoria Ranch specific plan, um, a zone change. Um, and and revisions to the Victoria Ranch tentative map. The city council approved the item subject to include a twenty feet driveway, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, roll call.
Council member Tucker?
Here, yes.
Council member Eugenio?
Yes.
Council member Amparano?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burnworth?
Yes.
Mayor Dale?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
To uh resolution approving a two-year time extension for the Encanto Estates. Besting tentative map, track map.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, community development received an application for an extension of a Encanto Estates. Besting tentative track map. Um, they requested a two-year time extension. The original map expired March, I mean, it was approved March fifth of two thousand eight. And expired September fifth of twenty twenty-two. Asking for an extension um till um for September fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a, do we have a timeframe on when it's going to be, we're going to start on this? I mean.
Uh, yes, the applicant just renewed their annexation application. Um, the applicant is serious, you'd like to um ask questions, then?
Well, the question is just, when will we start the project if we do do a two-year extension?
Good evening, Alex.
Evening, sir.
Eric Councilman, um, I purchased a property in two thousand nineteen, so we assumed the map. Um, so uh, we're basically farmers. Um, uh, the uh property developed, we're asking for a two-year extension. Because either we're going to have a developer develop it. Or we're going to, as a company, deploy funds to hire people and create our own uh construction team. So, um, w- we're in a quandary, and so you're asking me a specific question of what date will it start? Either those two things will happen within the next two years. Um, the previous two years been sort of chaotic just to run a business. And so, um, we haven't put the energy forth to do that. So, that's what we're asking your patience for this, so e- either or will happen.
Oh, just standard question is timeframes is what I'm looking for, because I know that you just acquired it in twenty nineteen, so it's.
Yeah, it, I can say.
You can't get blamed for anything before that.
Right, and so, but even from twenty nineteen, just to get traction and what to do. Uh, we did actually have the property um. For investors, well, for uh for developers. And uh, things pooped out pretty fast, and after two thousand nineteen, there's no traction to do it, then COVID. And then just what we were doing, so I I I would think within the next two years is going to be more positive than the pre- the previous two years. And, you know, we'll, I'm sure when I come back in, it it's a large piece of property to to develop. So there's, there has to be phases for it, it's not gonna.
All of it.
There's just no way this thing is gonna be all at one time. We own, we own adjoining property. To that piece that connects everywhere, so there there's, it's quite a large block. But the other's not even going into for maps until this gets done, and then the next one.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second, uh, roll call, please.
Council member Tucker?
Yes.
Council member Eugenio?
Yes.
Council member Amparano?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burnworth?
Yes.
Mayor Dale?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much, thank you for approval, thank you.
Hey, move on to F three, purchase and sale agreement between City of Imperial and Fifth Street Development LLC.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, uh, before you for your consideration this evening is the approval of resolution twenty twenty-two. Dash sixty-five, that would approve the agreement between the City of Imperial and Fifth Street Development Company. For that portion of a right-of-way that is already next to the Highway eighty-six and Fifth Street. Or Fifteenth Street, rather, uh, development. Um, it's about twenty thousand square feet, and I will stand for any questions that you have. This is the right-of-way that abuts the already owned portion of that area. That is the current development of the post office, McDonald's, and Starbucks.
Motion to a resolution.
Motion a second, a roll call, please.
Council member Tucker?
Yes.
Council member Eugenio?
Yes.
Council member Amparano?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burnworth?
Yes.
Mayor Dale?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, um, the meeting of the city council is adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M.